We'll call to order the Village of Oxford Plan Commission meeting this day, October the 4th, 2022. If we'd all rise and pay respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. Ma'am Secretary, if you please call the roll.
Kelly Arcles, here. Justin Ballard.
Here.
Scott Flynn.
Here.
Maureen Helmer.
Yes.
Michelle McCallum.
Here.
John Nold.
Here.
Leslie Pilat.
Here.
Alright, we got full, uh, okay, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda for, uh, this evening's planning commission, October 4th, 2022.
Support.
Alright, we have a, uh, motion from Flynn and a support from Helmer. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we have an approved agenda. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes dated September the 6th, 2022?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to request an amendment to the meeting minutes from September 6th. Specific correction to, um, section 6, 6B, the roll call vote, the Nold should be replaced with Flynn on the nay.
They just need to be swapped?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, what, what line, is it page two, line fifty?
Line 55.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-four and fifty-five.
So Flynn was a no.
Yes.
And Nold was a yes.
A yes.
Oh.
Nice job, Terry.
That's all.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Alright, uh, alright, so we have a, um, uh, motion from Flynn and a second from Nold. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can't you repeat the motion, was it, are we approving the minutes with that amendment?
With that correction.
With that, aye.
Yes. Uh, alright, uh, are you good? Uh, Madam Secretary, was there any correspondence?
Yes, there was. We received a resignation letter. From our committee commissioners.
Kelly?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, Kelly put her resignation letter in today, and so, um, thank you, Kelly, for all your time and, uh, service that you put in. It takes a lot to be part of, you know, to be part of, so thank you very much. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, and I want to thank my fellow, um, planning commission members. It's been great working with you. I know it's been trying with me sometimes, but I appreciate your patience, and, um, I just have a really wonderful opportunity that I can't pass up and I need to focus on my time on, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Um, Mo, I always know you love to, uh, receive and file correspondence.
Do we have the correspondence?
Uh, it was an email, so it just came today, so it didn't come to everybody, but I did, I ended up getting it and sort of tell you as well, so.
Does it have to be sent on to council, Terry?
Pardon me?
Does it have to be sent on to council?
Yes, council points and removes people from commission, so you do not have that authority, but you can receive and file the information.
I'll make the motion to receive and file when we submit it to the House of Representatives.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so, uh, please file and, uh, please receive and file that correspondence. Alright, so it takes us now to new business tonight. Uh, this takes us to, uh, the NODA, um, the parking lot expansion with the fuel tank, uh, storage, with a 1,000 gallon fuel tank storage at, uh, 675 South Glasby. Uh, Mario, if you please start off with your review.
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, tonight we are here for a site plan review for the project as discussed by the planning commission chair. One thing I wanted to note right off from the beginning is my letter, um, is based on a plan, the original plan set submitted by NODA, uh, and the plans dated July 12th of, uh, of this year. Um, since that time, uh, NODA didn't have a chance to take a look at that letter and begin renovation, uh, begin revising the plan to address those issues. Um, however, uh, just because of scheduling and, and the fact that a lot of professionals are busy, they haven't had an opportunity to get certain plans, uh, completed, for example, specifically the landscape plan and the lighting plan. Um, so, uh, we're approaching this as a phased, um, approval because NODA would like, given the fact that this is, uh, surface improvements and in order to, uh, make sure that things can begin prior to, uh, the first, uh, freeze coming in that would prevent, uh, the project moving forward until the spring, uh, NODA is looking at a, uh, a phased approach. So, uh, preliminary approval tonight is under consideration for the plans, and then, once they have the ability to get, um, the landscape and lighting plans, then they will submit those, uh, for a, for a final site plan approval. Um, we've done this in the past, in the past with other plans, not for construction purposes, but for, um, but for other purposes, and so I thought, uh, village manager and I both felt this was appropriate because it's the, the improvements that they are going to be going forward with, should not change as a result of the landscaping or the lighting, so it's not going to be a substantive change. Um, so, as I'm going to go through my letter, I'll address the initial comments and then how they have revised them for the plan set in front of you. So the plan set you have in the application has some of those primary revisions, uh, most notably that, uh, the lands, the parking lot has been revised. So that's a second set. Forgive me, I don't know the date of that set. I didn't, I didn't write that down. But I just wanted to clarify that as, as I go through the letter. But as you mentioned, this, uh, is a site located at 675 South Glasby Street, the west side of Glasby and northwest of Lord Orchard Lake, uh, Oxford Lake Drive. Uh, the site's two acres in area. It's occupied by a single-story, 20,000 square foot building where, uh, the western or rear half of the building is leased to a, uh, separate company, PYP Ventures, after that's Pat Fenwick. And then east, or the front half of the building is occupied by, by the open, open transportation authority. And then there's also an off-site parking lot located on the south side, um, of the building, and the west as well. Uh, and then there's also a rear portion of the site, or further west in the western edge of the site, uh, that is approximately 20,000 square feet of unimproved grass area. So it is in this location that they, that NODA is proposing to expand the parking lot to the west to allow for more parking, uh, and also the installation of onsite fuel storage change. Use is permitted by the district. Uh, when we look at the parking requirements, uh, I'm sorry, I need to back out. Yeah. The use permit in the district, the mention requirements are fine. Uh, when we look at the parking requirements, they meet on the parking, minimum parking requirements. Our ordinance does have a maximum, state that the maximum number of parking spaces shall not exceed 125% of the minimum required. Um, however, the planning commission, uh, can permit additional parking above the maximum based on documented evidence. The applicant has provided a narrative, uh, indicating that the parking is needed for 26 vehicles and potentially 33 employees. This would be the storage yard for their vehicles that are providing the, uh, transportation service to the north open portion of, of the community. And so it's necessary, the expansion of the parking is necessary to accommodate the vehicles that are needed to provide the level of service they want to have. Um, so, and since that, since the initial application, they have provided additional information. So we do believe that the, the expansion of, and of the parking lot and having the additional hard surface is a necessary component of the use. So therefore, we would recommend that you grant them, uh, the, the modification to allow for greater than 125% of the minimum required for, um, in our initial review, um, we had, we had some questions regarding the amount of cert, parking surface, uh, just seemed a little excessive, um, but they have revised that to minimize some of the hard surface in the corners of the lot. So as proposed, the plan in front of you, we believe that, that not the hard surface provided is appropriate, um, including, um, but one, one other issue though, that, that you know on the site plan, so we'd like to have the applicant address at some point, uh, when it's there determined. Uh, we did recommend the probability of using, uh, parking bumper blocks provided for the 20 spaces adjacent to the building. That's mainly to, to ensure that vehicles don't, uh, damage the building. Usually that's done either by a curb, a raised curb, or bump, or the bumper blocks. We just think that's something that should be addressed.
Uh, so are you, um, Mario, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
Is that more of a recommendation that you're asking for, or is that, uh, I mean, because that's, uh, it's?
Yeah, technically our ordinance doesn't specifically require it.
Yep.
Hopefully, so it is more of a recommendation, um, but typically, all parking lots either have a raised curb or the bumper blocks. Uh, and definitely, uh, they would be raised, uh, bumper blocks are necessary, uh, along the edge of a hard surface that leads to, um, landscaping or grass area to not only protect the landscaping, but also to prevent deterioration of the parking surface along the edge, because the cars keep parking close to that edge over time, parking surface quickly deteriorates and then becomes an issue. Um, so for those two main things, at a minimum, they are required along the edges. Technically, they're not required near the buildings, but it's something you just recommend it because it does seem to service the property owner as well. They don't have to deal with damage to their building.
Mario, I'm confused. The drawing we have, I believe it has parking blocks throughout the entire parking lot.
Oh, okay, well then, forgive me, I, I might have been looking at the wrong set of plans, because they're, they're listed there, and that's, that's great. So as I mentioned, that, that's part, that's a perfect example of how they have addressed a lot of these issues already. The only things left outstanding are, are bumper blocks. Then the only other thing we requested that, um, initially, well, one of the other things we requested initially was that they provided a truck maneuvering plan. We wanted to make sure that the turning radiuses were appropriate. They have provided that, and it is designed appropriately so that there be free flow of not only their vehicles, but also, uh, emergency vehicles. Most importantly, we wanted to make sure the, the fire trucks and fire emergency vehicles can traverse the settlement. They can. The, the parking lot configuration will accommodate emergency vehicles adequately.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, with the landscape, with landscaping, uh, they did provide that initially. They're working on it similarly with the lighting. They're working on that issue as well. Uh, and then the last issue, um, was initially we met, we, uh, recommended that there be, uh, because the ordinance, the zoning ordinance does require sidewalks along the public streets. Um, you mentioned that, it's an requirement. Um, however, along Glasby, you do have a sidewalk already on the east side of the road, uh, and it goes through the majority, if not the, well, almost the entire length of Glasby from, you know, from the park all the way down around to Oxford Lake Drive, almost. Um, so, the applicant is wondering if they can have a waiver for that, and I will, will point out that the last site we reviewed on the, um, west side of Glasby, uh, Loom, we didn't actually require them to put in a sidewalk. So it would be consistent with what we've been doing. So in the end, um, based on the revised plans, we would recommend that you grant preliminary approval for, uh, the site plan contingent upon the applicant, uh, submitting a landscape plan and lighting plan for final approval at a future date.
I would question what needs, what's allowed to be done to the site before filing approvals for?
Um, I would, uh, if you'd like, you could possibly include that in your motion, and I would recommend, uh, we can talk to the applicant, see how extensive they want their improvements, but I believe it's about, uh, the pavement, making sure the pavement area is, is, um, installed, um, to the, to the first extent that they need, matching the configuration that's in the plan in front of you.
Any other questions, Mo?
Not yet.
Okay. Leslie?
Uh, not, not too many questions, just a comment. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, uh, when you submit your landscape plan, uh, make sure that you check what the ordinance says, because it appears as though you have about eight mature trees currently, and it looks like you're going to be taking a number of them out. So, uh, the requirement is that you replace somewhere on the site, uh, the appropriate trees, and we emphasize Michigan natives, um, and trees that are going to tolerate drought and so forth, which, so, um, if, when you submit that plan or when you're working on the plan, make sure you take a close look at that, so you are in compliance. Also, um, there's a requirement that, that you do a mixture of species, so you don't have all the same plant, or all the same tree. If you have any questions, um, in, you know, direct them to the village, but, um, sometimes I, I take a look at those things and give additional input.
Thank you.
Michelle?
No, Mo covered what I was going to ask.
Kelly?
Not yet.
Okay. Scott?
You know, I'm good for one.
Okay.
If I may. Um, Mario, I have a comment that will lead into a question. Um, it's a hypothetical similar to, uh, comments made by Mo so far as a, a what-if scenario of what we'd be approving in this initial phase of the renovation and parking lot expansion. We, the addition of the parking lot in and of itself is pretty straightforward. Um, the latest plan addressing John's concerns about the bumper blocks, or at least we had that point clarified. We haven't talked about the 1,000 gallon fuel tank. Um, would that be included in our, again, theoretical phase one approval, and are there any concerns with the current plan as outlined specific to the storage?
Um, fuel storage. So, once again, that the, the approvals would be to allow for the parking and, uh, the fuel circuit, uh, the fuel storage area, because that's in the middle of the parking. Um, and based on our ordinance and the requirements, our requirements are actually pretty limited to what, uh, fuel storage tank requirements would be. Um, but as proposed, they are proposing bumper blocks along that, along the area to protect the fuel tank. Um, and, and beyond that, the fact that it's an above-ground storage tank, they're putting it on reinforced concrete surface, uh, which is revisable because of the weight that's created by the tank. Um, and then there, and the circulation plan for me addressed the fact that vehicles could stop fuel and not compete progress around, uh, progress of vehicles around it. And from a circulation and a, a configuration standpoint, it seems to be correct. Everything seems to correct beneath those technical, technical standings. Um, beyond that, when it comes to fuel storage, uh, I would think they would just get, need to get any other appropriate licenses, and that would be, um, actually addressed by, uh, by the department or possibly the state as well. I'm, I'm not as familiar with those requirements, but any, we would require any licenses. Uh, this village would require the receipt of copies of licenses prior to the operation of the tank.
But we could require that those tanks not be used until we have approved plans.
You could, yeah, yeah.
But when, um, so maybe a question for that is not to, not to, why would we, why would we ask for that?
Why would you not? It's been July, was the, the original plan?
Yes.
So you're looking at, you get the pavement done, you're talking maybe December. That's six months. You can bring a plan back to us with the landscaping and the parking and the lighting before you use it. You can install it, but don't fill it until we have those plans. That's my opinion.
Just, just answer.
One of seven.
Just answer.
Or nine, seven. Because I'm not a nice person, Justin. Ask anybody.
I'm just, I just, I just asked. Um, Chief?
He knows.
I, I see that you have three, uh, three specific, um, items that you had put on there. Any questions or concerns above what you had put on here?
No.
Any comments?
No, we reviewed it with the international fire code, everything, and they said, we are just with that.
Jim, is there, uh, what specific licenses do you need for the tank itself? That, do you, do you know that specifically?
It just, it's going to be a dual wall.
Yep.
You know, fully protected. Uh, Mario said that there's parking bumpers or not, or the, the bollards that go all the way around, and you know, the tall posts, just, you can see.
It's going to spell.
The Ace Hardware with their appropriate tank type thing. Um, so yeah, we got the dual wall required.
Do you, do you have, I guess, an estimated time on when the landscaping plan and lighting plan will be finished?
We actually received a landscaping plan today.
That's okay.
And so I could go over the details of what they projected, and, um, if you wanted to get to that, that it wasn't, there's a couple changes we wanted to make, and so we thought we better just wait till it was redone to present it to you, but it is done. I spoke with the lighting, um, um, company, and they said that that should be underway. They hoped it was going to be ready for today, but it should be soon. So, um, I think maybe by the next meeting, protection.
Um, thank you for that. Just, I wanted to, looking to get some time. Um, like timing on how long that would specifically take to maybe answer some of the questions that we kind of had. Um, there are, there are like two things I think we as a panel need to discuss as far as, um, the two waivers that are on the table, um, such as number one, the sidewalk, and then the curbing. So, is there, let's maybe take one at a time, you know, do we have any questions or any issues with potentially keeping or, um, making them have a sidewalk or allowing the variance?
I mean, if it's consistent, like, you know, what we did with Loom, I mean, might as well, I mean, I think that that's okay to allow them to not have to have the sidewalk.
What percentage of the west side doesn't have a sidewalk?
Zero.
Zero of it.
In the west.
West side.
I can't picture many, maybe in the residential section by the drifter, but that's about it.
It does, or?
It ends at TKMS, all those other.
There may be a sidewalk in that side, uh, stretch of 10 or 12 residential.
Well, I just think we make them put it all, all the way down.
And then it ends as soon as it goes into.
Yeah.
So I think what we're talking about here is, uh, the implication is that if we waive this sidewalk that any future applicant on the west side would be looking for this waiver. Is that, you know, how we already?
Well, I, I think there's a few things that have already been kind of approved in which we had the opportunity to put sidewalk in, sidewalks in, and we allowed it to pass because there were already sidewalks on the east side, right? And we felt that that was sufficient to bring it around. And as that corner lot got developed next, that would help finalize that corner, and then as the new, as the new, um, properties there on the corner of, um, Glasby and?
Oxford Lake Drive.
Yep, and that will have sidewalks as well. So, that one corner is, I think, what we decided that we're just waiting for that to be developed, and that sidewalk will be finished all the way to Drainer.
Alright.
Okay. So, does anyone have concern, on the panel here, have concern with us waiving the sidewalks?
No concerns.
Okay, so, we, we'll look at potentially removing the sidewalks from the, or allowing the waiver from this, for the sidewalks. Now, um, maybe let's talk about the curb section. Any questions or concerns about allowing us to waive the curbs around the parking lot, since they are in the plans and have already discussed they'll be putting the, uh, the bumpers in?
Was there anything in Row's engineering about curbing for the drainage?
They're, uh, not for drainage, but specifically around the parking lot.
We're making all of our drainage, everything in the parking lot will be maintained in our parking lot and in our stormwater system.
So the curbing won't be necessary to maintain any of that?
Curbing would only.
Until we get a million or five.
Protect somebody from driving onto the property next door.
We should have an interview.
And I couldn't find in the ordinance where it says that it's required, Justin. Were you able to?
Mr. Sharp, yeah, Mr. Sharp, will you kind of just, uh, introduce yourself to the panel and because, I'm sorry.
I'm going to come up to the phone.
If you would, please, just kind of explain how you kind of, how you kind of fit in this, because I don't think everybody here knows, uh, exactly who you are, but how you kind of fit with.
So, uh, my name is Jim Sharp, we're Sharp Engineering. We're the engineers who prepared the plans. Um, Lynn, I'm going to get your name wrong.
Kramoski.
Kramoski, Wes Gussafson, so recently married. Um, she's here representing NODA as well. So we're the engineer, um, they're the, they're the applicant here. So, we're here to answer any questions that you might have. We're talking about the curbing right now, and I know that we had a discussion earlier today, um, with Row. I don't know that it's in the ordinance that it, it says that it has to be curbed.
So, yeah, so I did, uh, so I went through all the ordinance, because I could not find where it was specifically referenced, and I kind of read through it quite a bit, and then I couldn't find it, so I actually called Paul from Row. He specifically showed me where it was at within the ordinance. But what I also did as well is I drove through every one of the parking lots, all down Glasby, and there is not a single one that does have the curbing. And if it were to be caught and it were to be addressed, uh, it wasn't addressed with Loom, and it was not addressed with, um, uh, TKMS as well. So, it's one of those where it's, um, it's not being enforced, and it's, if it's never, it's not being, okay, it's not being used, or there is no properties out there.
Just to save us in the future, I just want to point out that it is in the ordinance, it is a requirement, but the main reasoning for the curb is to make sure that there's stormwater management and that sort of, and to make sure that we don't drain around the areas. There are other ways to manage it, um, with swales and other types of things, and as I mentioned, and they're going to work with Row to make sure that they, the stormwater is managed, so that's appropriate. Um, and the only reason I mention that, Justin, is because other, other sites might not have, uh, have curbs because maybe they existed prior to that requirement, so they're just legally not conforming at the moment, or, uh, they might have some other means of dealing with the stormwater. Um, but there are definitely, we do want to make sure that we have, still have the ability to enforce that, uh, at future sites, but as they're proposing, as they're proposing the method, I believe the, working with the stormwater, that it's not necessary.
If you look at sheet three, we're, we're required to provide a grading plan, so sheet three kind of shows the grades of the parking lot, it shows the floor arrows, it shows everything being maintained on our property, and then at the request, we, uh, added the bumper blocks. They are shown against the building and along the edge of the parking lot.
I just want to say, even if we make the mistake once, we don't have to redo that.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mo. Go ahead, then.
Paul, uh, Paul from Row Engineering wrote a letter dated September 8th, and he agrees the sidewalk waiver. It's a response to some letters. And he talked about the curb. The curb is a borderline question. If the waiver is based on what's happening with other sites, he would say yes. So he's more or less leaning to what we have done with the other sites on Glasby Street, so that's from Row Engineering. He referenced the Loom site at 595 Glasby Street as a model.
Didn't Loom's parking lot open up into another parking lot?
Yes.
So thereby, Loom and, uh, there was no place to put a curb, because they were, it was right to the property lot. I mean, and they were, I think it was functioning together. Um, so I wouldn't, we do rely on Loom for this one. And I'm not saying I want curbs, but I'm just, you can't compare one apple to oranges.
Good. Yeah, so, um, any other questions related to the curbs? Any other?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, so is there any other questions, non-related?
I have one.
Go ahead, John.
Mr. Sharp, on your timeline, because we're into season, asphalt only can be laid certain times. If you were to be delayed because of the, uh, site plan for landscaping and lighting, what would that do to your schedule to get you up and running by the end of the year?
It'd probably shut us down, because we wouldn't get to the next meeting, or we probably wouldn't get to, till the November meeting.
Okay, so that's very critical tonight, that you get this phased, um, a preliminary site plan tonight on contingent on landscaping and lighting, so you folks could start business to get pavement down before the weather breaks.
This has nothing to do with getting the pavement down. This has to do with filling that, that tank. I'm just saying, and keep that tank empty until we have approved plans, which shouldn't shut you down unless you can't get a plan together for like five months. I don't know why you can't get a plan together before you fill that tank and get a plan approved.
Who's everybody's back?
But I think when they, um, I just don't know how it's installed. Are they putting the bollards? If they put the tank in, and do they put the bollards into the pavement while you're doing it? I don't know.
They do, but I think as long as you would agree to not fill it and not use it.
Well, that's true. I, I have no problem with that at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't bother me.
We can make that a condition of the approval that we're not allowed to, to utilize that tank.
I just don't see it holding you up on anything unless you're like the, the world's worst landscape planner driver, draw, or the world's worst lighting project drawer.
I'm ready for a proposal.
Okay, so if I see no, let's say no more questions, is there any, uh, do we have any motions on preliminary approval?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
This is going to include preliminary approval as well as final. The Village of Oxford Planning Commission has reviewed this parking lot expansion with the 1,000 gallon tank, with the location being 675 South Glaspy, partial ID number 0426327010. It finds that this land use meets the conditions noted in this resolution. This will be a phased approach for preliminary approval awaiting landscaping and lighting for final approval. The changed letters to be included in this resolutions are as follows. McKinney's letter dated September 28th, 2020, Oxford Fire and Police Letters dated August 10th, 2022, and July 26th, 2022, respectfully. Response letters from the NODA dated September 7th, 2022, that addresses the revisions. The Planning Commission grants a waiver for the sidewalks requirements. The Planning Commission also grants a waiver regarding curbing. The Planning Commission grants permission for parking modifications. And the 1,000 gallon fuel tank will not be used until final site plan has been approved.
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Noel and a second from Helmsworth.
You just make our names up because you go.
No, I was, because I couldn't, I couldn't, like, I was trying to think about who said it, so thanks. Madam Secretary, if you please call the vote.
Parkos?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Palma?
Yes.
Thailand?
Yes.
Thank you.
This means we don't get those fuel curbs.
Oh, man. All right, it takes us now to new business B, and this is the Modern High Speed Car Wash at 153 South Washington Street with applicant AP Keith Lutz. So Mario, if you please start, I'll have him kind of go through it. Maybe, how about maybe the other way around, is maybe they introduce themselves and then if you, if you would please introduce yourself, kind of tell us a little bit about your plan, then I'll have Mario kind of review his, his findings. How about that?
Hello, my name is Alan Hall with API. I'm the architect and San Fatac is here, he's the owner of the, of the car washes. The Clean Hub Car Wash is, a number of them are being constructed right now. There's one currently in Sterling Heights that's active. There's one being planned right now in Shelby Township that's under construction. We have the roof well underway. There's one going in Combe Township is another one. Oxford here is another one. So, so you're part of a master plan of some of the things that Sammy's been putting together. So it's not a franchise, this is his product, the Clean Hub. So this, this property is, is right on Washington Street. I don't know, how far do you want me to go into this? Do I say everything or are you going to do? Okay. So it's, it's about an acre and a half site and it's on the, on the west side of M24 Washington Street. And currently there's, the property is going to be, it's bigger than what we normally do for the car wash. So as architects said, we shoved it over to the side to allow opportunity for an outlot. It's not an outlot now, so just, I want to make that clear. It's just, right now it's an opportunity for us. So right now it's green. There was some comments on Row Engineering's letter about the what-ifs, this became a split site. And then there's easements required and different things that are going to happen with that, absolutely. And those, the traffic concerns and that kind of stuff would be considered if and when that becomes a split lot. So just to kind of clarify, his engineers.
Basically, if I, if I don't know, I, you know, intervene here, it's basically an extra land at this time, and we don't know what to do with it. So we just left it, we're going to leave it clean. And then if there will be a use for it in the future, then we might entertain it. But as we speak now, there is really nothing there, it's just, you know, grass, basically, the way it is.
So it is a high-speed car wash. It's automatic car wash and the idea is super convenience for members and the speed of getting through a car wash. That's kind of the model for it. You'll see on the site plan, there's a number of parking stalls that have vacuums to them. There's 20 of them actually. The idea there is convenience to vacuum near your car. It's not, you're not going to have 20 cars in one vacuum. It's the idea of the, where they want. Some people take two spaces when they go in so they don't have to use the vacuums around the other side. So that's what that's for. You'll see there's two stacking lanes and then there's an escape lane on the outside. The two stacking lanes that go around, everything is driven by a card reader. So when you become a member, you'll get a sticker on your car. And as you pull up, the, the equipment there will pick it up and then you'll know your package immediately. So then it'll set the, you know, customize the wash for you and it'll set it for you to drive through and then it's done. So that's, so it tells. So there's two lanes, one, the outside lane is for members only, so that just goes, it goes flying right through. The one that's closest to the kiosk building there, there may be people who want a membership or have questions and that kind of stuff, so that's what that's for. So hardly any employees, probably two that manage it.
Yeah, probably, I mean, I can probably speak. Yeah. Operation and how we operate. Alan is.
Thanks, Sam.
The planning, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
So basically, you know, we are a membership type of concept, you know? So we're focused on, you know, getting members, unlimited washing. So that's why Alan, you know, names it, you know, a high-speed car wash because you don't have to stop at the kiosk, you know, you drive in, you know, the radar will pick up your, your tag, we know what kind of wash you need and you, you know, you circle through. And, you know, you come back in your vehicle, we have air guns. So, so it's type of, you know, the new model of car washes is an express car wash. You know, we do most of the cleaning for you, but we ask you to do some of it yourself. You know, your vacuuming, your air guns, you know, this, that, so. So between both, we, you know, we offer the product of, you know, affordable, fast. And, you know, we implement our new, our new model is we use, you know, state-of-the-art equipments. As you may see, our buildings, you know, modern clean buildings, energy-efficient equipments. We recycle 80% of our water, biodegradable soaps. So it's basically, you know, not to take your time, is the latest and greatest technology of the car wash industry. And I'm trying to sell it, maybe.
Well, thank you for that because it kind of gives us an idea, you know, you know, what is coming in, so you know, what's coming in the community. So thank you for all that information. I appreciate it. So awesome. So appreciate, and as we kind of, as we go on, we'll probably have some more questions for you. We won't have to stand up there at the podium, but thank you.
Can I just say what this totally reminded me of?
What it totally reminded you of?
Remember when your kids were little and you bombed that little Tonka parking lot? You drove it through and it circled around and you went through the dump? This is Tonka. It's all the same. It's just a Tonka, you copy this?
What was that, we could do an experience?
I hate my kids.
Jesse, can I ask a quick question?
Sure, go ahead.
Also, I didn't, and maybe I missed this, what are the hours of operation?
We open at 7:00 AM and we close at 8:00 PM. And it depends, I mean, this is our Sterling Heights location, but it depends on the area, based on the traffic, if there is, the latest will be open, it's going to be 8:00 PM, this is the latest, but we might close earlier, depends on the traffic. If there is no traffic on, you know, Washington, then, you know, we're closed early. So we're going to get our custom, you know, that out.
How loud would you say, like, I mean, is it fairly noisy? I guess I'm not.
You know, you know, actually, this is a very good question, and I get asked these questions all the time when we develop these car washes. And we've done a noise study, and actually we're not any louder than the street itself. You know, our equipment, it's, you know, everything is indoor and there is hydraulic equipments in the back and a mechanic room that is closed, so you can't hear anything. And from the outside, it's really no noise. And the vacuum producers, they are basically a motors that they are spinning and they do not produce much noise. So we've done it in Sterling Heights, Alan, if you, you know, if you recall, they advised us to do a noise study because there was a concern and was a lot, you know, less noise than the street and the cars. So it's basically these motors, they are the same noise, noise or less as an idling vehicle. That answers your question.
In Sterling Heights location, were you close to residential?
Actually, the street behind us, yes, there was residential, you know, so they had that concern and, you know, this, this was, you know, addressed as, as I, you know, explained.
Okay, thank you.
My part of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Part of our vacuums, we tried to put it on the side and I think we can ask for variance for this because we are wanting to be in the back and in the back of the property, there might be residential in the future. So we consider that, you know, our plans, we probably decide, kind of make it, you know, kind of like work it out before, you know, it happens.
Sure. Yeah, and that's one of the things that we'll, we'll end up talking about and we'll end up getting to. But I would think, you know, before we kind of dive into some more questions, let's, let's get Mario to kind of give us his synopsis of what he, what his findings were and then we could probably maybe help answer some of those questions and as additional questions kind of come up.
So as opposed, within, within our ordinance, the site is in the C2 district, car wash is a principal permitted use in the C2, but we do have some specific requirements, one of them being, as you just mentioned, the vacuuming location. And technically, vacuuming activities are required to be located in the rear yard only and also setback at least 50 feet from adjacent residential property. So therefore, the applicant is proposing 20 vacuum spaces located to the north side of the building, so it would be their side yard. So while these vacuum spaces do comply with our 50-foot minimum setback in residential, they are not located in the rear yard, so technically they would be required to get a variance from that standard. We do believe the location of the, the vacuuming stations in this location is appropriate, so we will be recommending approval to the ZDA. And just a couple, a couple other things to address that. I've reviewed a lot of car washes lately for some reason, and so they all have these type of configurations. We had a pre-application meeting with the applicants, engineers, and we went over some other issues, some, some things I've taken from my experience. One thing about these particular vacuums is they're, they're not a cylindrical vacuum at each station. They have a bar that transfers the power from one central vacuuming spot. And we asked that to be located in the front of the building, and then I also asked for masonry enclosure around that to mufflin the noise. And they have provided all that. And so there is very minimal noise from the vacuuming points themselves where the actual hoses are. The only issue that ever comes up is any noise from that. And then the other noise really generated from the car wash activity itself is any blowers that are usually at the end of the car wash. And with the building configuration pointed at Washington Street or 24, you know, they're not going to be the farthest point away from any potential future residential to the rear because to the, to the west or rear of the site, it is zone R1 residential. And so these, the, the noise generation of the use are the point farthest away from residential and they're, they're going to be mixed in with the road noise from Washington Street. And I required, in other communities I had to, the noise study was required and as I concurred with the applicant, the noise is pretty, it's a lot less than what we experienced with older car washes in the past. So going, there's other things with regards to vehicle circulation, the fact of they need drying space for the vehicles in the summer and the, and there, excuse me, and I just mentioned a bit, building orientation, but we do believe as proposed, the car wash itself is in compliance with all those other requirements that are specific to a car wash. And as noted, the building is going to be pretty attractive, they're using a variety of materials from a dark brick along the foundation of the building, a white plus white block on the walls, horizontal panels and a mixture of concrete panels. So in the end, it's going to be a very modern and very nice attractive building. They are in compliance with parking requirements. And we do know that while there are 20 parking spaces for the vacuuming, vacuuming is considered, I mean, we're considering an accessory use to the car wash activities itself. So they're not really parking spaces, they're vacuuming spaces. So we feel that having that number of parking spaces, the vacuuming spaces is appropriate. Specifically, when we get to the landscaping, in general, I do believe there appears to be compliance with the standards. A couple of things I found was that provided shrubs should be revised, sizes should be revised to meet the standards and ordinance. The plantage should be revised, provided percentage of planting. And then the schedule and those revised just reflect Oakland County and the building of Oxford. Then similarly with lighting, they have provided a lighting plan, there's only three things with regards to that. We do technically need the light levels along South Washington and North property line. Currently, they see the levels, so they have to be revised to comply with the minimum level requirement, light level requirements at property line. So while not necessarily other requirement, we would suggest that the use of the pitch of the skon swab fixtures, only direct light downward or use a different cylinder lens so that the uplight reduces the lumens projected into the sky. We are trying to keep the down, keep uplighting to a minimum as possible. Other communities do allow uplighting minimally as an architecture feature because that seems to be pretty minimal. I couldn't find the quantity of the, of the lumens that they allow for uplight, so that's why I couldn't provide a specific quantitative requirement. But in general, architectural lighting doesn't contribute that significantly to, to lighting. And then just recommend it off, well, not recommend, required it off, those fixtures have to be utilizing a fixed mounting bracket they had proposed on angle one. And one apology for me in my letter, paragraph H was regarding the sidewalk was not accurate, that's from an old lady, so you can ignore that. They, they are providing a sidewalk along Washington Street. So in the end, the project will remain, remove, make a building at the time in the village and allow for a new use that is in compliance with the ordinance standards. And we would recommend that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval contingent upon the applicant obtaining a variance for the side yard, smittle of revised landscaping plans and smittle of lighting plans addressing issues identified above, and then also any conditions of Planning Commission approval or other consultants.
Thanks, Mario. Kelly, any questions?
Mario, where, where the vacuums are located? That is adjacent to the parking lot, that's a part of Oxford Veterinary, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then beyond that, where they have the drive, that is where the, from what I've noticed, there was just one residence that would be backing up to this.
Yeah, basically kitty corner to that, yeah, directly behind the drive.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Scott? In the, I suppose this would be the northeast corner, Kelly, to your point.
West.
Northwest.
Yes.
This corner where there's those residential homes or residential properties. I see on the west side a four-foot, six-inch masonry screen wall. What's the proposal for a noise barrier or general property line distinction?
Actually, the ordinance only requires a wall specifically to that height.
Is that all?
Between, between, and it's, it's for any commercial property adjacent to your residential property.
But it doesn't appear that that wall goes along that one residence.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, along that northern property line.
West corner.
In the west corner, well, because technically the, their property doesn't, isn't directly adjacent to the residence. The, there's a lot in between them that is the access drive envisioned as a future access point to the, to the vacant property to the west, that's zone residential. That's basically going to be the access drive into the residences. In theory, you could require the little light, the line, masonry wall along the 50-foot segment along that northern property line, but it won't be adjacent to the residence, it will be adjacent to the future drive. But it is something if you. But it is something if you felt would be appropriate. It is more about, the reasoning for the height is more about making sure that car headlights don't shine into adjacent residence backyards or front yards. It's on, you know, a four-foot, six, doesn't do a lot when it comes to all that noise. It is helpful, it is, and like I said, the main function is to protect residents from disturbing headlights keep flashing through their back yard. So with the configuration of the vehicles, they wouldn't be aiming in that direction of that one house at the north side. But if you feel that's important, you could request.
Quite frankly, I don't feel that strongly about it. I just wanted clarification based on Kelly's comments.
No, thank you. Thank you. So as I'm looking at this though, and there is a slight curvature when they first come into the one line where there could be a potential headlight distraction for that residence.
That is true. Other ways to deal with that could also be the use of a hedgerow. So as long as it's an evergreen hedgerow that's consistent, you know, like a U or something that might be more, provide a complete opaque barrier but not a seasonal. That's the extent of my knowledge of species, so I.
Personally, I would want to make sure that any action that could be taken to, you know, preserve the existence of that established residency be done.
Would you prefer, like, in your thoughts, what are you preferring, like, trees, like landscaping-wise, or continue on with the barriers such as the masonry screen wall that they have up here?
I honestly do not have the background to really say which one I prefer. I would just want to make sure that that residence is not going to be hindered by that, not going to be disturbed by that.
You know, I mean, absolutely, you want to be on the same page, but, you know, probably there, you know, I would not, you know, want to disturb. But the way I look at it, we, what do we need to accomplish here is the headlights, you know, we need to find a solution for the headlights. As far as noise, I don't think we'll make much noise there because, you know, the cars are exiting from this side and, you know, the noise is the majority here. Here will be minimal noise. As far as this, this will be a drive and there is a residential lot in the back, so, you know, there might be a development in the future. So even if I put a wall here, this residence here, they'll still have to deal with all these cars. It's one of these things that their location is there and this area is becoming more commercial, so we can, we can address it with hedges, you know, I think will, or evergreen, that probably will, you know, will help, you know, with that. But I think this residence, not because of us, because of the drive, they'll always have this problem, the way, you know, the way I look at it.
Thank you, appreciate that.
The only thing, the only thing I would counter with that, that was with a straight-on drag-through, it's not going to be directed at their property, it's going to be going straight west, whereas there is this slight curve, depending on how busy you are, which I'm hoping that you'll be busy, that it could hinder that. So that's, that's just my concern.
And I agree with you, we are willing, you know, to find a, you know, a happy solution, you know, for all, you know, we're not.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Absolutely, I have no other points for discussion.
John? The masonry wall, Mario, it's four foot, four foot, six inches. Is that a requirement? Can we go to a six-foot wall?
Four foot, six is the required dimension. I'm not sure if we can yet argue that.
Height of the fence is six.
Correct.
So I would be interested in entertaining a six-foot wall screening along the, that'd be the west side. And then since there is a road that's going to be used in the future on the north side, I think if we put some kind of plants along that north side or a hedge along that north side, they do call out irrigation on that, so that might suffice to be a little bit of blockage. That would be my thought on the walls with screening. The other question I have is that you, the new future development, I don't know what to call that lot, that's not irrigated, is that something you gave a thought to, yes or no, or?
I have not given any thoughts at this time, just excess land at this time, we leave it, we leave it at that.
Okay, that's fair. Can you tell me what an air gun is?
An air gun?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. An air gun is, you know, a device that has little like, you know, lever, you push it and it releases pressure there and that helps you to clean like the nooks and crannies.
Keyboard.
Like, you know how we have, exactly, thank you.
Or like your keyboard, you have that air?
Yeah, those little things. So, so when you have air vents in your vehicle, it's very hard to clean these, you know, so you, you know, you shoot them with air, I guess all the dust out or, you know, you're...
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just about the wall, I think, I mean, personally, if I was living in a house and then all of a sudden there's like a six-foot wall there, that just sounds, to me, like aesthetically, I wouldn't necessarily want to look at that, but it would maybe be nice to have like the evergreens or something like that to just, just in case there's a little bit of that light, I mean, that does get annoying if you're always, you know, I live in a spot where there's this big light at the end of my road and I don't like to look at that either, but, you know, but if there was something that blocked it, but like...
We're talking about this point right here.
And that would be aesthetically decent too. Plus it might, you know, snack down some of that extra lighting, you know, just in case.
Consider, we're not open at this point here.
Well, that's true, right, right. Only up to eight or so, yes.
We're not like a fast, we're not as well as top people there.
This is between here.
Is it eight o'clock is like your latest?
You can't get, you can't.
Right, so it's not, yeah, I understand that too.
What is the distance between the back wall and the drive? So where the evergreens are, where the evergreens are, where you have the arbor videi right now? The distance between from here to here is what I was, what I'm looking for.
For shaded area?
Yeah, the shaded area, yes. Like the width, not the distance, the width.
Live tables.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's 10 feet. Okay, so yeah, so it's a lot, it's a lot wider than up to 10.
Yeah. Yes, it's 10 feet, it's about, yeah, a whole more than 10 feet. So you have a buffer, then you have a wall, you know.
I was thinking about live, like anything live as far as having some sort of, some sort of live plantings of whatever, evergreens or...
Plus it would just like break up the area too, I'm just thinking for like, well, yeah, and if you're talking, I mean, if you're saying like there's that drive where it's going to lead to residence, I mean, it just kind of would like break your property up from that drive and maybe keep down any...
Looking for a study.
Yeah, I mean, and just, yeah, and just too, I think with, you know, people drive kind of crazy, maybe kind of keeps them from going into the area, I don't know, just think, yeah.
No, absolutely, thank you. We'll, we'll think of, you know, a solution and we'll implement it.
Anything else? All set? No?
I think I solved my own question, but, come here. Yeah. So you come in and you put, put, put around here, you come around this way, you go through the tunnel, hit the masonry wall. Or are those words supposed to be pointed to the vacuum producers?
Yes.
I thought that was the masonry wall in my...
That's a strike.
You just can't see it. Okay, then we're good. That arrow was very...
Yeah.
So we're good, Mo?
I can fit through that now.
Okay. Leslie?
Yeah, thanks. I agree with the comments about the back wall not being six feet high for aesthetic reasons and also with the comments about adding living plants to both aesthetically improve the appearance but also to, you know, cut down on the sound in some regard and just be a little bit more, well, I think the aesthetics mean a lot, especially with an environment like this where you, you know, you have opportunities to do that with your landscape plan and you have a very interesting landscape plan. I really like the area toward the front where you have the bench, benches and the pad, great idea there because we do have a lot of pedestrians in that area and that's very appealing and attractive. And I like the, the use of columnar plants to sort of break up a lot of the flat spaces. So I agree with that, but I also want to say a significant number of your proposed plants are not native to the US or native to Michigan. They're Asian species or they're species that are discouraged anymore, especially in an urban environment. And so I have a number of those that I could list right now or I can provide that information to you another way, but I think in addition to Mario's comments that you have, you know, too high a percentage of the arbor vides, for example. So to look at mixing other kinds of native evergreen screening materials like junipers, like other evergreens that are native to Michigan, that are smaller, you know, columnar, white pines, things that you can use in place of that. I know where you're trying to go with that, but we don't want too much of the consistent, you know, same plant for, you know, a lot of reasons. Specifically, you also have Bradford pear, you have two of them and they're discouraged at this point in time, so I'd like to see a substitution with, you know, any other similar tree that's small, that's flowering, that could be the service berry, it could be a go-to-dogwood, it could be a non-flowering smaller tree that is native to Michigan. We're looking for native plants as much as possible because they sustain our environment but they also sustain our local wildlife more effectively and they're available, so, you know, for all those reasons.
Good idea.
The Colorado's crews are also disease-prone, so we wouldn't want to see using any of those. The spirea are Japanese and there are a lot of cool local Michigan natives that provide wildlife support in addition to just doing everything else that you want and being a little easier to take care of. So dwarf burning bush is also not to be used for, because it is considered invasive in Michigan forest. And the other point I want to make is that very large area that currently you are proposing to leave open for future development and hydroseed. I would like to suggest that instead of hydroseeding some kind of grass, that you consider hydroseeding Michigan native wildflowers, which will need less care and also will support pollinators and be, you know, aesthetically pleasing, maybe not the entire area, maybe portions of it. So you can see where all my comments are going. Everything about your landscape plan has been really well thought of, I just think that the actual plant choices need to be, were more carefully chosen. Let's see if I had any other, so shrub substitutes, I mean, really, the only thing I see on your list that I, that I'm not, you know, particularly opposed to is that arbor videi use, the multi-stem red maple will be very nice. The hostas are fine, they're easy to take care of, daylilies are okay, and the double knockout roses are okay. So it's really just substituting similar plants in the other areas. Any questions or concerns from you on my recommendations?
Do you have a list that we can?
I can supply your suggestions.
Yeah, we can do that, because I mean, service berry is fine.
Okay.
At least about a flowering.
We're definitely open to using, you know, local plants, but regarding, you know, the open area, you know, to the, to the south, I don't know how would that look if we keep it a while, you know, maintenance.
It's a reasonable consideration.
Yeah, I would like to keep it, you know, grass, you know, hydroseed and keep it green for now instead of, you know, doing any, anything else with it at this time. Because I'm just concerned about the maintenance and the overall aesthetic, but the rest of it, I completely, you know, I agree with you, we'll use more local plants, you know.
Well, why doesn't, your landscape, are you doing the landscape?
Yes.
So if you would look into Michigan prairie wildflowers, which are low maintenance, no maintenance, and see if that would meet with your approval, I'd like to at least consider them.
And they can be utilized almost as in a bed, like?
Yes, that's right.
You can keep them, you can keep a majority of the, of the site to the south as grass, as hydroseeded, you know, Kentucky goose grass or whichever, but then you basically treat it like a three-foot, four-foot wide bed of the hydro, of the wildflowers. And then they actually, they aren't, there's no maintenance to it, there's no herbicides, no pesticides, no fertilizers, you don't have to mow it.
Much less than any seeded grass.
But then aesthetically, as when they look at it as a bed, then they do have that provide that manicured look that I think would go very well with your buildings. Your building is attractive and I think that extra added element would be pretty, I think you'd be surprised.
Just concern Mario about the overgrowth.
Yeah, well, that's why...
Concern about.
That's why if you keep it in that three to four-foot wide bed and still mow the rest around it, that'll, that'll keep it at...
Chief, can you say that can be a fire hazard?
You know, it used to be a landscape...
They end up being a weak patch because they don't do that well after the second, third year for not maintaining, mowing properly, taking care of it, you mow down in a year, but the third year is a weak patch.
I mean, I hear one of your concerns, you, like, it sounds like one of your concerns is, is you want to keep it clean and organized and varied. And I also know Leslie's concern as well as wanting as much verification as far as having the landscaping and having space being used properly as well, so.
I mean, Leslie brought up a good point, you know, wild plants brings, you know, wild species, which is, this is, you know, makes a lot of sense. And I like that idea, you know, you know, for sustainability. But part of our building appeal is a modern-looking building, clean cut, and we like to keep it, you know, to have a little bit of our branding, you know, and all other stuff that, that, you know, you mentioned, I'm completely, you know...
And I, I think that's a valid point. Let me, excuse me, I gotta take this thing out. I think that's a valid point. So I was, when I was suggesting it, I was actually imagining along the lines of what Mario was talking about, just an area, not right up to the building at all, but, but an area that is kept as, as sort of a natural wildflower, clodder is surrounded by maintained manicured lawn. So let, let your architect see what he can find out and he might be able to convince you.
One of the questions that I have as far as the existing asphalt to remain, are you leaving it exactly how it is right this minute?
For now, I mean, reconstruction, yes, possibly, but after that, we'll be in the parking lot.
Okay, so where it says existing asphalt to remain?
Local here, on the other side.
Yeah. Will that be repaved?
For now, no, leaving it, we're planning to leave it as is. We're not, we're not doing much with it because there is no future plan, I mean, it's not like we'll be like doing it twice.
It's newer pavement.
Yeah.
No, I thought for some reason in my head it was all broke up and it was, was not new.
Yeah, as far as I can recall from what site we're at, it's not great, it's not bad. I think the issue might be that depending on the level of construction and how careful the crew is when they're doing their work, if they break up the surface, the condition of the surface afterwards. But we have maintenance, we have periodic maintenance requirements anyway, you know, if, if it comes to that point, ordinance will let them know, you need to, you know, add seal or, you know. Okay, the other one?
Yeah.
Different periodic maintenance.
So it can be addressed?
It can be addressed in the future.
And just, I mean, you know, our branding is very important to us and our appeal is important to us as well. We'll not let anything deteriorate or, you know, not look, you know, appealing or part of our brands. So as you may see in the plans, a lot of the areas we want to move on beyond because it's part of us and who we are, you know, so I just want to assure you that if it needs to be addressed, without the board telling you needs to be addressed, we'll address it.
Okay, good.
But we'll take it from there after construction, see how it looks.
Okay. Yeah, because I, you know, I personally, I really like the design. It's really great to have something, something new in that spot and to be able to put something, you know, something... and to be able to put something, you know, something where you've created in there. Hearing that your brain is important is really good. Okay. Any other questions that we have, that maybe, anything else we need to discuss?
Can I add something to something?
Chief? Yeah, give me one second. Go ahead, chief. I wouldn't have forgotten you, don't worry.
Okay.
I would have definitely remembered.
With our report, the normal thing is as far as the Knox box on the building, address on the front of the building.
Yep.
But because in that area of the village, actually, all the area in the village, there are no hydrants on the west side of the road. So I have no access to water. I can't be laying a five-inch hose across M24 because it gets to be a little rough on the end of the hose, you know, and gravel trucks are going over it, kind of thing. So anyhow, we're requesting that they put a water main across to that side of the road and put a hydrant under the property for us because there is no water there.
So your recommendation is bringing it across 24?
Right.
So the closest one is on the east side?
Closest one is on the east side, right by the, well, it was the coffee place. Now it's going to be some kind of a barbecue place that's going in, smoking place. But anyhow, otherwise, I have no way of getting hose across the road. And you're shutting M24 down completely. And again, if any development that goes behind them is going to need that water main to go back that way anyhow. So if it comes across the road, it should be coming across as an eight-inch main and then put the hydrant there. Right now, their water service, that's, the drawings, unless I get a different set of drawings, the utilities aren't shown on the drawings. I mean, it doesn't show the gas line, doesn't show the water line, doesn't show the sewer line, the connections, any of that stuff on there. So the water service that comes across to that building right now, I believe was a news that they bought across when they did the construction, but it's only going to be, I can't believe it's much more than an inch and a half or whatever to supply them with the water. So I don't even know if they've got adequate water supplied the building with right now what's there. I don't know what they came across with, so. I know the gas line where it is because I can show you exactly where the gas line is because we sat there that one night for like eight hours when they hit it. And when gas consumers comes out there, marks it for you, where they mark it is not where the gas line is, it's about four feet away from there, so be prepared. Also, the other construction, I don't have any, there's no drawings or anything that shows the underground tanks that they're supposed to be holding the water into recycling. And in these drawings, and there's no description anywhere, isn't any of the plans here that goes into that detail at all as far as sediment, blah, 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 as far as what gets charges into the sewer. So I'm surprised from the engineering side or something that that's not called out, so.
Well, the electrical was, that was going to be some of my questions as far as from the electrical side. As far as, I know that there is power lines that run directly in the middle of the site. And so how is that going to be, how is that going to be addressed as well, so. Excellent. Thanks, Chief.
Pete, how far south this, from Lincoln? Who are we talking about?
Apart south from Lincoln?
South.
Yeah, because you've got the whole width of the gas station, and then you've got that...
Which is maybe 100.
At least 100, more. Then you've got the easement of the road that comes back to the property starts.
And where's the hydrant on Lincoln? Just, I'm not saying it'd be a great idea.
It's down around the corner, it's down our ways, yep. There's a hydrant right in front of the church, but again, the one on Lincoln is a long ways downer. So again, I don't have good access to a hydrant.
I was just hoping there was one right there, so, wouldn't that be a lot of problem?
Thanks, Pete. Mario, so, you know, as with a lot of these things that the chief had stated, you know, so how are those things addressed via, let's say, approval?
So the engineer didn't have a chance to look at the drawings. And if he wanted to comment, if he thought that issues like grading or utility access wasn't going to be an issue, I would have thought he would have brought them up and wanted to see that at this point in time for the site plan approval. Since he didn't, the applicant will have to submit some construction-level detailed drawings that will include building foundation, the tanks that will be going underground, and that sort of thing. And that will be reviewed by the engineer. So it gets reviewed by the engineer administratively, and he'll make sure that everything's appropriate for the building code and for all the other code requirements.
Because they'll have to follow that anyways.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Because this is brand-new construction. And it will take some time because, number one, you got demo. Number two, you got to, well, before you can demo, you got to deal with DTE. And it's going to be forever, because they take a long time for everything.
Luckily it's done.
Oh, is it? Wow, excellent. The fact that they already pushed their DT is remarkable. So anyway, but similar with other utilities, is make sure to address their concerns. That's why any approval you grant tonight should be contingent upon any other departments of the village and the village engineer. And then it would be reviewed administratively. Like the landscape plan and the lighting would be reviewed administratively. And once the applicant submits construction-level detailed drawings, they will be reviewed administratively by both the building official and the engineer and other appropriate village departments.
For more curiosity purposes, is how do they plan on running the electrical overhead lines? Obviously, they're going underground. Are they going in the front or are they going in the back, towards the back of the property?
So if you look on the drawing there, you see that they are doing actually going to that transfer.
Yep.
It goes round to it.
Okay.
Pete, what would your suggestion be for a hydrant? M24, do you want it down that side?
Looking at the Washington Street side of it, where it says new sign near the nation right by the drive.
To that end?
Either there or down towards the next island right there where it goes into the back drive, number two.
So chief, that would have been picked up, or that would have been, you would have gotten that, your requirements as approval went through, right? As the whole process kind of...
Our review, our review letter states that, and that's what we picked up from our review letter.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Mario? Okay.
Pete, did you say an eight-inch?
You know, seeing that there's no more questions or comments, do we have any motions?
I have a motion prepared.
Okay, if you would.
This is for Modern High-Speed Car Wash. The Village of Oxford Planting Commission has reviewed the Modern High-Speed Car Wash with the location of 153 South Washington Street, partial ID 0427278022, and finds that the land use meets the conditions noted in this resolution. Change letters to be included in this resolution are as follows. McKenna Letter dated September 28, 2022, Row Engineering Letter dated September 28, 2022, Oxford Fire and Oxford Police Letters dated September 1, 2022 and September 6, 2022 respectfully, as well as any other departments within the village that have yet to review this project. The variance for vacuums located, the variance for vacuum location is approved for side yard location. Location of the vacuum motors with the barrier, with a barrier would be on the M24 side of the building. Rear masonry wall area, we'd like to have more landscaping for screening. Landscape plant choice slash hydroseed replacement with hydro wildflowers as a consideration, and we'd like to use less, Planning Commissioner Leslie, Pilak landscaping suggest in list.
Jonathan?
Yes, ma'am.
When you mentioned the portion about the more landscaping around the wall, does that include that curve?
No. Oh, oh, excuse me.
So to protect that one residence...
Did you want it to run from that?
And it doesn't have to be a wall.
Yeah, the wall, we left the wall.
But yeah, something that can, some, you know, as Michelle had mentioned, landscaping as this gentleman mentioned.
I can add landscape to be added on that north west side, thank you. Northwest side of the property as you enter the drive.
Basically, we say the radius.
Yeah.
The radius there. Okay, we'll address it.
Thank you, sir.
Question. You mentioned the variances. They have to go to the zoning board of appeals for those.
Okay.
We don't approve of those, those are a whole lot of meetings.
Then I rescind the variance for vacuums location for the side yard. And that will be rescinded for the location of the motors on M24.
You're going to have the ZBA meeting.
Yeah, but I thought, just for clarity, I thought that we still had to discuss that to make sure that we wanted, we were allowing it to go to the ZBA, correct? And that has to be part of our motion?
Usually, I just recommend that you put something to the effect of the site plan approval is contingent upon the applicant receiving the variance.
Okay.
Because that way, in case they don't, then the site plan approval will have to be relooked at because they'll have to come back and address that issue, if for some reason they won't.
Mario, can they recommend approval from the ZBA since...
No, they don't, they don't think involved with that. But the mere fact that they're approving the site plan is, you know...
It's on board, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of, you know, implied.
Thank you.
Can I read the motion? That was quite a mouth.
Read it again?
I'm like, can I read it?
Good luck.
Yeah, I guess I can read it. I just, I think it's a lot, and I'm a little concerned about the utilities, and I'm a little concerned about the hydrant, I'd like to hear more. Did we have something from Don?
The hydrant's called out in the chief's letter. So when I reference the chief's letter, everything he listed is called out in that, so we've got it covered.
Did we hear anything from Don Braylon? Or did you talk to Don Braylon about it, Pete?
I'm seeing a letter from him in here dated...
Does it mention the hydrant at all?
It says site plan does not contain any water service or sewer service details, and that's it.
So we are in agreement with the hydrant, this is something that we will do.
Okay.
We're agreed to it.
Don Braylon's our DBW director, he's the one in charge of the water mains and the hydrants, and he's the one who allows PTs to occasionally. So I just want to make sure Don and Pete are on the same wavelength.
Right, as long as water main is well over there across the road and then hydrant is put in, then at that point, then Don can tap the water main at that point to run their water service from it at that point, too.
So basically, what we're doing as well is all the necessary municipality, everything has to be...
You're not giving a mandate for me, are you?
I was going to.
I wouldn't.
I was going to, Justin Ballard explained to you.
So does that include, you're talking about the reservoir to hold the water that's being recycled, is that all? Like, do we have to include that in here? No, that is, okay.
Do you have a motion before we make some decisions?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Madam Secretary, please call the vote.
Pilak?
Yes.
Palma?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Arcless?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good luck, John.
Excuse me, who has the key to the restaurant? It's locked.
Restaurant on the west side?
I didn't know you could go on the west.
It's, I mean, right down the hall, there's a, yeah, that one door's locked. It's, if you pull on them, the door, I just used it.
Okay.
The door's not shut, it's open just a smidge.
Thank you.
Okay, this brings us now to old business, the internally illuminated signs zoning text amendment. So Mario, so basically, we kind of brought this up, or maybe brought it to the attention because there was always, whenever, the only reason why signs have the, have very specific requirements that have to be met. But the internally illuminated signs are the only ones that need our planning commission approval, right, to me. And so one of the things was, I recognized that it was always the same criteria that we're always discussing. And I was wondering if we could basically encapsulate that within the amendment of the ordinance. And talking with that, and we kind of had discussions with that the very first time, or last time we had met, and I didn't, there was two noes related to that. So kind of what I wanted to do is maybe discuss it more, just to say, see what Mario's suggestions was that he would bring to the table, and then maybe discuss a little bit more about maybe concerns about adding that new adjustment to the ordinance, or if we just want to leave it just the way it is. So Mario, if you'd just maybe talk a little bit about the changes that you thought, and then I'd like to hear your guys' concerns, specifically Mo and Scott, about, you know, what your thoughts were about how those were brought in front of us.
Yeah, that's exactly the issue. It was brought, the fact that, you know, we do tend to have quite a few internally illuminated signs come to us. And then just sometimes we thought it'd be a little bit more business-friendly since you developed a consistent policy and theme, relatively speaking, for these signs. And based on your experience with the need for that review, just trying to incorporate it into this paragraph. So number one, we would, I just recommend that rather than it be a planning commission, it be a building official, because a building official does review other sign permits. But then I also, I like, whenever that happens, though, I like giving the building officials some leeway and also giving the applicant a method of appeal. So the first paragraph also states that the building official at any point in time can choose to forward an application to the planning commission for your review. If for some reason the building official is like, well, no, this just should go to you guys, then they can choose to do that. And also, if an applicant, after building official reviews and they're denied, they could have the ability to appeal that denial to you if they so choose. So I just, those are two alternatives. Usually, I like seeing those in there, it's up to you if you'd like to keep those alternatives or not. Because you could also have somebody else review the sign permit if you'd like myself to review it, because I do review some permits, that's an option. But then the second paragraph is about trying to quantify, be a little more specific regarding those standards that you've been doing. So that's why it gets into the fact that specifically for the internally illuminated box signs, having both a dimmer and flamed sensor that automatically dims the luminance level to 100 candela, which is what you're doing, from dusk till dawn. Mainly, that way the site, the sign can be bright enough during the daytime that it needs brighter light levels, but then from dusk till dawn, reducing that because that, there's not as much light. They don't need to be, it's not competing with the sun anymore. It's just, it's just making it visible enough for drivers. And then I thought it was important to say, to kind of call up channel cut letters separately because usually the channel cut letters aren't as bright, don't cause as much of an issue. So that's why I just said they should install just a dimmer to reduce the light level. And then I tried to just utilize some language for guidance for the building official because in the end, letting the building official determine whether the sign itself is the right size and scale of the building and whether it's aesthetically pleasing, basically. And that kind of language, while written down, is generally, you know, subjective enough that it gives the building official some leeway, but some direction. Because you don't necessarily want to require them to do a review, but not give them any direction about, like, what is it they're reviewing? Because that's what you guys tend to be looking at. You look at making sure that the sign is, you know, it fits the size and scale of the building. I mean, we do have our sign size requirements, but also its position and appropriate, so. That's what I came up with, and I wasn't sure if that captured what you guys thought and if you feel this is something that should be kicked down to the building official or you want to keep on reviewing.
Mo?
Oh, it goes pretty clear last one. And I, and chief, like, signs used to go to the zoning board of appeals. And they'd pay a lot of money to get a zoning board of appeals there. So we brought it to the planning commission. I don't think we should just keep kicking it down the road. This is our responsibility. We always seem to have good conversations when someone brings a sign up. Jonathan wants to know if it's going to be too light in their residential house, or, you know, what's it going to look like? So I would just prefer to keep it at the planning commission last one.
Mo, if I could ask, because I understand you completely, were there, was there a history in the past that also caused those type of signs? So that made it an issue, that it required that kind of high level of review? Like what, or is it just that they wanted, or is it more just that they felt that best that something that could be that impactful be reviewed by...
Well, they didn't want any illuminated signs. They wanted the goose neck sign.
Right, right.
And it's all a matter of trying to keep it historical somehow, and, I...
No, that's what I was trying to add. It's like, yeah, I was trying to figure out why. And it does make sense, like, on the one hand, you know, business strategy, treat modern, but on the other hand, what is the character of the village, and should we be more historic? And goose light being more historic makes sense. So I think I see what you're saying.
Thank you. And I just kind of wanted to hear that. My thing was more or less that we were always talking about very specific things, having a dimmer inside the, inside the light, and always having a certain illumination setting. That's what I was trying to kind of maybe automate for us, to help, that the internal workings could handle that, because it's still coming to us. Most of the time, it's always, you know, the square footage has to always fit in a very specific thing, right? If it doesn't, if it's not within that square footage, then it automatically gets kicked back, and we would never even see that. But it seemed like everything that was coming to us was already kind of pre-approved. The only thing that was not approved was that the percentage of the dimness, or the dimmer switch specifically. And I thought that maybe that that could be changed, put in the ordinance, and then it wouldn't have to be presented to us, because there was very specific rules. But it was more for easability and to maybe help the applicant get what they needed quicker for the, you know, getting them set up as a business owner, and getting their sign on the exterior of their building as quickly as they could, too. So, so I mean, at the end of the day, it's not something we have to, you know, have an answer to today. And if we can table it, and if, or discuss it some more, or just completely, let's say, we want to keep things status quo.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Only because you had addressed Mo and I for voting nay in the last round. If I may, my vote was based on two different perspectives. One, the business owner's perspective, in trying to understand the cost burden for installing a dimmer switch. And I see in Mario's recommended language, a photometric sensor that automatically dims the luminance of the sign. I don't know if that was new language, or is it something in addition to the dimmer? Then that further reinforces my concern of added cost burden onto the business owner. The second perspective was a balance between objectivity and subjectivity. I think in this case, where we defined the 100 candela, that's a very objective number, while being conscious of the subjectivity on the aesthetically pleasing element, right? That's completely subjective.
Sure.
What you may find attractive, you know, may not be the case across the commission. So that was my, my thought process in the last meeting, when we discussed this, and those two different perspectives. I'm not sure if we, I mean, do we know how much a dimmer, and now the photometric sensor costs?
Actually, I was interested in that, so I did ask, I was only gonna talk to a couple contractors, but both of them said, a dimmer's about 50 bucks, and the photometric sensor to make it work is about 150. So, and these signs typically cost in the several thousands.
That number is very important to address and mitigate that business owner burden concern that I have. So I'm not concerned about that. And addressing the balance between objectivity and subjectivity, I believe, are adequately defined in the verbiage proposed by Mario. So, background for my thought process in the last discussion, and then now where we're at today. To your point, I think there's others that have some comments.
Just one second, Leslie. Go ahead.
I would say, just, well, somewhat to Scott's point, I think that, the one thing that does concern me here is that with the aesthetics, you know, that's putting that on the building official, one individual. Whereas at least, and this is something that just hit me when I read this, that at least, when it comes here, you have seven individuals who can vote on that. You know, you're not leaving it to one person for that subjectivity. So that is one thing that, as I read this, concerns me.
You know, and I think maybe the verbiage, it was, once again, I think more or less the verbiage, what I was trying to get specifically was, every sign that came to us from the planning commission side, one of the, every single requirement that it was, it was always contingent upon adding a dimmer switch, and contingent upon very specific looms. And that was it. We would always approve it, but we would always approve it with those two contingencies. That was specifically what I was looking to address, was to say, otherwise, it would have been approved. Otherwise, it would have been approved by, by, by the office, and not, it would have never have come to us. That was the only reason why I said, hey, does it make sense for us to look at those two very specific things? Because every time they've come to us, we've always granted it, and, but we've always granted the contingent on those two very specific topics.
And those aren't subjective, those are objective. Those, right, I mean, that's what we're having every time, and so that's...
That's right. Because as of right now, the signs have to be a very specific square footage, on a very specific wall size. And then, and as long as those things kind of, as long as we, that was one of the criteria that we met, but... So that's why I was specifically trying to look at having the adjustments to the ordinance.
I'm in favor of the language about the illumination, for a couple of reasons. One being that if it's adopted in the ordinance as an amendment, that allows business owners and applicants, ahead of time, to know what that expectation is. It also is in line with the changes in available lighting technology a little bit more. And I think helps guide some of the decisions that will be made by the applicant. You know, in terms of, okay, well, if this is what the ordinance says, I'm gonna look at this kind of signage, and actually, I think would help them, as well as helping us. Now, I don't know if the building official is, would have a ton more work as a result. But I think that I agree with the comments about the importance of, if there is a question of aesthetics, I think we are the proper place to review and consider that. But if it's a question of simply the illumination, I think it's not fair or reasonable to make the applicants come to our meetings. And also, you know, we have other business we can then do if we're not reviewing those. Especially since it's very consistent all the time, and there's no changes from applicant to applicant. The only changes are when there's an aesthetic concern, or question about, you know, two sides of a building, or unusual circumstances. So, I would be in favor of adopting the language. And I would also be amenable to any changes that maybe in, in the very first paragraph don't occur, that aren't changed, so that we still would be reviewing problematic signs. But I think that the ordinance reflecting the second paragraph could go forward no matter what. That's my opinion.
Thanks, Leslie. Michelle, any comments, questions? John?
A lot of information here. I'd like to think about it. I don't disagree with Leslie, Leslie, and I agree with, don't disagree with Mo. I think they're all valid issues, aesthetically, for the town.
Pete's having a stroke.
Well, one other thing I should point out is that, it's kind of, I would have, maybe we can arrange the existing ordinance language a little bit differently, too. Because the existing ordinance language does say, it does say that as long as you're doing externally illuminated signs, they're just permitted by law. So people can choose to have externally illuminated signs. And I think that's, that was by design, so that way, those are the signs you're encouraging businesses to have, because it matches the historic character of the village. It's only when they try to do the internally illuminated ones, that they have to go to the design, to, for design and view. And definitely more for the aesthetic reasons. I see, I do think it is, it would be a good modification, I think, of meet your, a lot of some of the initial concerns that were brought up about quantifying the quantities a little bit more, and letting them in there. But maybe that's something that we could do with the channel cut letters. I mean, it kind of alludes that in the existing language about the opaque letters that are backlit. It calls it backlit, rather than the channel cut, which is, still gets a good effect. But one thing I suggest, maybe we could do is ask the village to say, how many sign permits are externally illuminated and already get proved? Like, how many people choose to go that route, and how many people choose to go the internally illuminated route and come to you? Because if every sign coming to the village lately has been all internally illuminated, only because the salesman for the, for the sign company was good at owning it, that's one thing. But if, you know, you're getting a lot of new externally illuminated signs, and it's only a handful, that might dictate, that might at least provide you with more information as to, like, what kind of situation you're dealing with. Because I could definitely can see the point of, you know, with the historic nature of the village in downtown, you know, what elements most contribute to that, and what elements would most detract from it. And so maybe, if everything was a box sign, it eventually could get, you know, away from that objective of historic preservation.
I think a lot of it does stem from the business owner, though. The business owner, really, you know, they have an idea in mind of what they want their sign to look like, your brand, and the logo, and things like that. So I think that is, I think a lot of that is driven by the business owner themselves, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Chief?
Just a quick comment. When you were mentioning about leaving it up to the building official to decide the appearance and color, and all that kind of stuff like that. I would be hesitant to go that route, only from the fact is, because the building official is under contract. And in the time that I've been here, we've gone through three to four, five in the last six, eight, nine years. You know, and then one of the guy could be here this week, and he could not be here for another month, and he could be here next week. So, you know, this building official could say, "I like this," and then that building official, you know, a month from now, could look at just that one drawing, and give approval of it, whatever. And then the other one comes back, you know, two months later, whatever. So I, I don't, I think you would be creating more inconsistency, as opposed to having something that's, I don't wanna say cut and dry, but I think something that's spelled out ahead of time. So then, you know, if Mo picks it up, she wants to put a sign on her building, she should be able to go to that forum and read it. Check, 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 good to go.
Thanks for, thanks for that. Is it, I mean, can we, let me ask you this, I mean, just for, just, I'm just curious, is, can we deny a sign because we don't like the way it looks? Like, from a, from a, from the building, from the official standpoint?
I thought someone told me no.
If we, if we...
We're not the taste police.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, is I don't think, I don't think we can. So maybe the, maybe that verbiage in here has to be, maybe the new ordinance that we have has to be changed. I'm not saying that we have to change anything, I'm just, it was more for just completely discussion, so that we can have some sort of conversation about it. But it was more for just streamlining the process, to make it easier for, not only for our office, but also for the business owner as well, and for the approvals. Because from my understanding, we can't, we can't deny a sign because it's super ugly, or it's super nice. But, but as long as it met this criteria, it could be passed. That's all. So, go ahead.
If I could comment on that, and I can check with the building department, most of the permits that I've seen that have come through have been specifically because of the eternal illumination. And the building officials don't make any kind of judgment on the color or design or anything. They do the checklist. It doesn't meet this of the ordinance, this, this, oh, it doesn't meet the eternal illumination, you gotta go to the planning commission. That's it. They do not, that's the sole defining reason why those things have come here. And they have come here because the building official catches them and says, "Oh, I can't approve this, I can't, we cannot issue a permit, because this has to go to the planning commission for that reason alone." So the whole idea about being aesthetically pleasing, I get it. But really, it's, it's not even a decision you make. When it, when it shows up here, it's all about, can it be internally illuminated? What is the proper illumination, so that people don't have any glare, light glare, light pollution, whatever you want to call it. And that's, that's it. So, if that's any...
Yes, that's, that's very helpful. So, just something to, you know, something to think about. And maybe during our next time, we'll bring it up maybe again, and we'll, we'll decide if we want to pursue it. And if we don't want to pursue it, then we'll, we'll put it to the side, okay? So I would say, maybe if we, unless there's any more comments about it, then we'll kind of move on. All right, this brings us now to public comment. Is there any public comment? Please.
Please have one at the top of the agenda, Austin.
What's that?
There used to be public comment at the top of the agenda, Austin.
Yes.
Dale Wilicky, 59, North Washington. That's up in the northwest quad on Main Street, and some outdated references. I'm between Huntune Funeral Home and Dunlops. Mo will appreciate that. I purchased the house 25 years ago, 1997. I had been a resident back till 1991. This house was my residence until recently. And many years ago, I sat on the planning commission, and I was the residential rep on the DDA. I was here last June to mention that MDOT had acknowledged that during their M24 reconstruction, they had missed getting a sidewalk street scape easement from me. Sidewalk is on my property, it was not in the right of way, no easement. Anyway, it took a year to get the sidewalk removed, but it has been removed. Contractor did a nice job taking it out. Another brick breaker strip along the curb, needs a little bit of maintenance. The MDOT engineer mentioned they're gonna have to come back and do some additional work north of the property, south. Something about the curbs, something about the two driveways, something about the streetlights. I don't know the details, and I don't know their schedule. So basically, sidewalk's gone. I need to thank the state representative, John Riley, and his staff for their assistance. Without them, this would have dragged on for another year or so. And state senator Rosemary Behr, and her staff, they were essential in my discussions with MDOT. So last June, when I finished up, I exited, and village manager answered questions and comments. He's not here. If you have questions or comments, you might want to direct them to him. So, thank you for your time tonight.
It's good to see you.
Thanks, Dale.
Hey, Dale, see the black eyes?
Mm-hmm.
That was a cat. I'm enjoying that.
No, I remember, my cat tripped me down the stairs, broke my leg.
I stepped on one the other day, two black eyes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale. This brings us now to consultant or administrative comments. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Commissioner comments from Township Planning Commission?
We approved a Taco Bell to be put out north of town.
Yay!
At the last, last planning commission. For those who like Taco Bell.
That's a community form joke.
That's a community form joke.
ZVA? So there's nothing?
Apparently, we're gonna have something.
DDA update, chief? Man, you're just talking up a storm today. Woo, look out!
Just finished this past weekend with our Scarecrow Festival, was very successful. Thank goodness, the weather was perfect for it. Lots, lots of kids downtown, which is really good to see. A lot of parents, a lot of families around, just enjoying town, and walking around, seeing the businesses and everything, so I mean, that was great. I think the biggest thing that was probably, the most overwhelming part of it that made you feel so good about it, was the volunteers that actually helped set everything up, and work the different booths and stuff, and then afterwards stuck around and helped, you know, take everything down, put it away, as opposed to just, you know, leaving it up to one or two individuals. So it was good to see the community come together to come through the whole thing. So for this, we move now towards getting ready for the, you know, the Christmas lighting, and then for our, the soup and sweet scroll that'll be coming up, you know, in December and everything, so. Looking forward to the holidays.
Thanks, chief. My son, just to say for the Scarecrow Festival, my son was really upset that he missed it. He could not do the pie contest. He could not defend his winnings last time, so he was really upset. But, all right, that brings us now to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Adjourn.